Welcome you to June to July eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Work session for the board of commissioners. I'd ask for Commissioner Thompson to lead us in our invitation and Commissioner Clark to lead us in our pledge. You standing with me please?
We bow their head. Dear Father God, thank you for loving us and blessing us and being our God. Bless this blessed group today that are here for us to listen to and for us to hear what they have to say. Bless this blessed community in our county and let us make good decisions that our life will shine through you. All in your son Jesus precious name.
One face flag and heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. The invisible would literally be injustice for all.
Like to take just a second to thank our state delegation for being with us today. Senator Hodges and Representative Townsend are here and just appreciate you being with us today and hearing what we have to say. And first on our agenda today is to receive an update on kratom, the legislation from the George State House Representative Rick Townsend. So thank you again for being here and we'll listen to what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glad to be here, Mr. Fallon, appreciate the invitation and everybody else. Cap, I've enjoyed talking to you about this subject. I know mental health is a big thing here in Glen County and we're trying to solve it. And one of the issues we have, of course, is a drug called kratom. It's one of those where it was a constituent based issue. And so I actually had two people live here in Glen County affect their families pretty heavily. So as a legislator, you kind of after that, you kind of look into it and find out, hey, what is kratom? And so that's kind of, we're going to talk just for a couple of minutes today. Don't worry, if you looked at the PowerPoint, I'm not going to read word for word, I promise. That probably scared you and Mr. Fallon, I'm surprised you didn't send it back last night and go, Rick, you can't do this. So don't worry about that. It won't be that. We'll go over five main areas and at the end, we'll talk about, you know, if you're interested in what can Glen County do as a county until state law passes? And I'll talk about everything else after that throughout the process. Just some basic facts. It's a plant-based drug from Southeast Asia. You can't import it right now. Customs will seize it and confiscate it and burn it. Comes from a plant. The leaves that come from a natural plant, overall, from what we understand now are relatively safe. It's just basically form. People that use it now, use it correctly, will throw a leaf in their coffee or tea and that's about it. But once it starts getting beyond that original substance is when all the trouble happens. And it's highly addictive too, we found out. Something one of the chemicals we'll talk about in just a second. But it just shows you there, it is a billion dollar industry too in the United States. Georgia's one of the biggest states in sales and actually manufactures as well. Here's kind of how it all starts out right here. If you look at it in front of you, how it starts off Southeast Asia shift, comes through the ports. Again, they have labels certain way to get through and then of course it gets distributed. There is a current law that we'll talk about in a second, just didn't have the teeth into it. So it sounds good, but really what's happening now is it's coming over and when it, once it gets here, it gets something called adulterated. In other words, they mix other chemicals with the other things that go into it and the consumer really doesn't know anything about it. FDA is not a fan, DEA is not a fan, a cause of drug concern. It's one of those where if you talk to any year, look, we'll shoot, see some examples in a few minutes, whether it's Mayo or Cleveland Clinic. And they'll tell you about the concerns as well. Just a little section about the claim benefits. It's kind of FDA bans anybody saying it has any medicinal value. It does not, but it does offer some pain relief if you do it the right way. If you look at the dangers below it, you'll see it is highly addictive and it can cause bad things. It is opioid-like, so it does attack really those opioid sensors attached to it. And that's where people are getting hooked on it, getting high on it without really knowing what they're putting in their body. Even the ones doing the tea leaves every day and they may do it for 20 years, they're addicted to it. It's worse than caffeine. It's, some people will try to say, hey, kratom's just like caffeine. It's not. It's not. Caffeine can't kill you if you drink a cup of coffee. This one kratom can, because when you get something out of the store, they're sold in convenience stores. We'll talk about that in a second. It's right now, over the counter. You just have to be eighteen, but if you walk in the store, a lot of times you decide the M and M's, the Skittles. Is that person selling to teenagers or not? Young kids. That's what you're worried about, because you're not sure what's in it. There's no teeth to say what drug they're putting in the package, what drug they're putting in that little bottle. The science of kratom, the two main drugs you want to look at, and it's really hard for me to pronounce, if I mispronounce it, I apologize. Tragenine and seven hydroxymtragenine, those are the two main chemicals of kratom. What you try to do, you'll see in a few minutes, we'll talk about how the bill itself that we have in there is going to lower those doses for people. So hopefully Georgia's knows exactly what they're putting in their bodies. Is this the laws? The laws sound good where you have to pass to be labeled correctly, dosage and everything else, eighteen, but it's not, there's no compliance. There's no teeth, there's no penalties for manufacturers, distributors or store owners to follow the law. As you know as well as I do, if there's no penalty, what's the risk? There's no risk at all. Confiscation, nothing like that. No risk at all. And so that's where, when I first started reading everything, okay, what can we do? And just like you guys, I was talking to Chairman Neal a minute ago. I bet you half the stuff you do, at least a third of the stuff you do because you're constituents. They call you and say, hey, did you know about this? There's an issue, there's a problem. Have you really researched it? And sometimes you can help out. Sometimes you can help out and other times you can't, because it's not your area. And the more we kind of started to read about what was going on with kratom, how it was affecting the local families here in Glen County, it became a major concern. One family
Had their kid OD on it and commit suicide. Another one's had to go to a mental health institution because of it. Became psychotic, he was getting off another drug, opioids, became hooked on kratom. And some people thought, hey, kratom's better than opioids. Well, kratom's dangerous as well, especially when it's adulterated. So, this is where we started picking up at the House, when I talked to a few people, we got some good chairmen who've been around for a long time, they supported the issue. So, we dropped the bill one eighty-one to help control kratom. Originally, we're going to outlaw it, but during the political processes, you know, it's an art negotiation sometimes, sometimes you have to judge to make sure it gets passed, what's best for Georgians. And as we got into it, like I said, we found out some people are reusing it correctly and the low doses with the leaves and things like that. So, after work with the American Kratom Association, they were engaged, it's a billion-dollar industry. We came up with a good compromise, we'll talk about that in a second. But, if you look at some of your sources here, Mayo Clinic, Cleveland Clinic talks about mood enhancement, it's ineffective, unsafe, the research shows a little promise, it's a long-term drug, that's why FDA's not going to do that. Like I said, other agencies like DEA, they're not fans as well either. Look at that bottom section of Harvard Health website, taking Dr. at Harvard, the complete lack of oversight of quality control, the production, it's still kratom, makes it, you use potentially dangerous. It's kind of like Russian roulette. And that's the biggest part right there, the guy from Harvard said, is when you're putting that substance in your body, the way it is now, especially in Georgia, you have no clue, the amount you're putting in your body, the chemicals you're putting in your body. So, we had another person testify where she lost a young daughter, who's a, where she truly her Alabama, when her mom came and testified. They lost their dad and husband because he didn't drink, didn't smoke, didn't do drugs, but he worked out a lot and started using kratom because thought that would help his post-exercise routine or whatever else, kind of helping him less for soreness and things like that. We wind up mixing it with the kratom energy drink that day and led to a heart attack about. So, there's multiple cases where not knowing what's in there, not knowing what you're running To kind of take it with, it's dangerous. And that's the whole part about this is make sure the consumers know what they're putting in their bodies at least. That's the biggest thing we're trying to do with this bill here. And you can see what Cleveland Clinic says as well.
About the dangerous health effects, DEA, we talked earlier, no legitimate medical use for kratom. Highlights of the bill, raise age of twenty-one, move it behind the counter, revise packaging requirements, that's the key, control the amount of metrogenine or seven-hydroxymetrogenine, prohibit manufacturers from selling adulterated kratom products. This is where we've got support of their industry, that people are doing it the right way. The bad guys are making everybody look bad by selling and adulterating the product and selling it for what it is. And of course, the key to all this is added criminal assault penalties for violations of the law. So, the manufacturer messes up the first time, it's a high misdemeanor, second time, it's a felony. You also got distributors and if the store owners don't do it right, they'll get charged with misdemeanors as well. So, it should catch the attention to make sure it goes into stores properly if we can pass this.
At Glen County level, it's a state level, but it has passed the House, it's in the Senate, it's in Healthy Eatman Services Committee, and want to thank Mike Hodges, Senator Hodges, for being here. He's on that committee. But, they'll be voting it hopefully to get it out of committee and then goes through rules and back to the Senate again. It came close to being voted on in the Senate, but Sine Di hit, we were two bills away from the vote and that's just the way it works. But luckily, the session still happens next year, so hopefully, we can do this for Georgia. And we just want to make sure Glen Canyons are safe, Georgians are safe, and the key is make sure people know what they're putting in their bodies. They want to OD on five bottles of this little elixirs, that's really dangerous. It comes in, it looks like an energy little supplement or whatever, but it's kratom. You have no clue, no dosage amount in there, no ingredients in there. And we just want to make sure our Glen County folks understand what they're putting in their bodies. They choose to drink five or six things after we lower the contents of the bottle, that's their decision, we can't do anything about that. You can use anything you want to, whether it's over the counter or a prescription or whatever else, but at least give them a chance, let them know what they're putting in their bodies.
Basically, the options for Glen County require convenience stores, shops, the kratom behind the counter. You can do that right now if you want to, if you want to. You can enforce it now if you want to. I've got the law, I can send that to, of course, the county attorney, Mr. Mumford, county manager Fallon. But, if you're interested in that, really can't do much more than that, because there are laws in the books, even though they have no teeth to it. You really can't supersede state law. So, the only thing, if you wanted to do something for Glen County and just try to move it behind the counter, the age is still eighteen, now it would keep the temptation of that kid reaching for that kratom in that Reese section or Skittles or whatever you want to call it. When I was going through Athens, right before you get sixteen stopped out at the gas station, it was right there up front, had cupcakes, kratom cupcakes and everything. I'm like, really? And I didn't have a kid under eighteen to see if the person would sell it to them or not, you know? But makes you wonder. So, that's one thing you can do, it may keep people from, young kids from actually getting a hold of it, teenagers, so that's one thing to consider. But, I'll be glad to answer any questions and you got a few other people concerned about it, too. I think one of them's going to speak Thursday night. But, it's one of those where a lot of people have asked about it. We're not trying to ban it. So, anybody out there, any constituent of yours asks, hey, are you really trying to ban it? We're not banning it. All we're doing is making it safer, Georgians, to try to put something in their body if that's what they really want to do, to know, try to make it a safe dose at least, so they know what they're doing. And so, I'll be glad to take any questions and like I said, I've got the DEA fact sheet, I can send you guys if you want to see it, or of course, the written, the bill that where it's at now, any of those kind of instances, I'll be glad to talk about. But, we have come up with a good agreement with the industry, so the good actors and the Kratom Association are supporting this bill at this time and hopefully, we can get it, like I said, passed on a state level in January and February. But, any questions for me or anything we've seen so far? And really, the key is, you know, to whether it's local government, state government, I'm not sure about DC, you know, we won't go there right now, but is listen to your constituents, find out what's good for your community, or if there's something that's harming your community, and then try to do something about it. And that's how this whole process really began and is really kind of happening right now as we're talking.
Rick, I know that when we were up there during the session, when the commission was out there and we were talking about things, you had mentioned it then.
Yes.
And I know it was passionate to you. How did this come across your radar for you to jump on this banner?
Really, our two constituents here in Glen County, two citizens, their families were affected. And then, once I, once I heard the stories of the kid dying and the other kid being, becoming psychotic because of kratom, I started doing the research. The more I read, the scarier it got, then I started calling professionals. I talked to the sheriff's organization, they deal with it. I talked to a local judge, he doesn't allow it in his drug court at all. They test for kratom now. We were in the first areas to test for kratom. A lot of people, law enforcement, don't know about it, don't know how to test for it. It's kind of a new substance. And so, that's how it became, you know, I talked to mental health folks, UGA, the lead researcher out there, lead pharmacist, pharmacy associations for it. And so, we started bringing professionals in, talked to other families that were concerned about it. And I was one of those dumb freshmen and my first hearing was five hours in judicial non-civil committee over kratom. We ended up going twelve before we got out of the house. But, it's one of those where it didn't matter how long it took, if it was good for us, that's how it all started, but based, just because of constituents, just because the people here in Glen County were concerned.
Would it be, doing this process that you're going after, would it become a controlled substance?
It won't be a controlled substance and that's where the original intent was, is to make it a controlled substance. But, through the whole political process and negotiating, kind of, what can we do to kind of make sure this thing passes, we can get it safe for Georgians? We came up with a compromise with the Kratom Association to lower the limits that metrogenine I mentioned, so it's at least a safe dose inside of those little bottles. Those elixirs will probably go away, those little bottles you see in the stores, they will go away, those kratom bottles. It should be really sold now in just that original form, those leaves. So, that's kind of the intent there, but it's not going to be scheduled anymore.
What was it, what was the original intent of kratom? I mean, it, did it have some sort of medical benefit or is it just something?
It's perceived, some people use it for long-term pain, chronic pain, they said it helps them.
So, it's a painkiller?
Well, it acts two ways. If you take a little, it gives you a high. If you take a lot, it gives you a downer. So, it depends how much you take. And when you're buying something off the shelf, you have no clue if you're going to have a higher or a low when you buy it and put in your body. And so, that's how it all started. Five states have outlawed it now, I think six is getting ready to. So, it is outlawed in some states, the Fed has chosen not to go after it in a, as making it a scheduled drug or the state either. So, we'll kind of see where that goes. Until then, we need something on the books with teeth, so we can go after manufacturers who don't do it the right way. Right now, we can't. Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions? Is there an appetite to formulate a ordinance that we could, could pass that would take it mandated behind the counter? Absolutely, yeah. And Aaron, would you work on that for us, bring it forward?
I'd be glad to. I've talked to a legislative attorney, let her know I was coming in and talking about that and she confirmed with me about pretty much options for Glen County. So, Aaron, I'll be glad to connect you two together to make sure we're on the same page. That's why we're, it's one of those where we want to do it right the first time, that's why we're going slow. And I just appreciate your support and just make sure everybody knows we are not banning it, because we're not. But, we are controlling it and we're trying to make it safe for Georgians and safe for Glen County, and so that's the key. We've got to, you've got to protect home first. Why else are we in Atlanta? You know, we've got to represent our community and really appreciate your support.
Well, you're our representative.
Thank you. You did say seven states and how long?
Five right now has and six was a, it was, I don't know if the governor signed it or not, I'll have to check. Five for sure is outlawed, banned it.
There's no appetite for that in Georgia?
There was and it was close. It was to the point where we had to make a decision whether if we just, I'd say retreat, but agreed to compromise. As you know, sometimes you can get your whole way a hundred percent. But, we, we said, okay, if we can get it to this next level, like we've got it, metrogenine, I think it's, we'd have it up to a point two-seven max in there. I'll have to look at the bill and see exact drug numbers, but that'll make it safe then, as long as the manufacturers do it the right way. If not, then we'll go after them with either a misdemeanor or a felony. That's the key. Sheriff organizations behind it, so I know once it becomes state law, they'd help us enforce it. One of the things in there, too, they've got to become a registered agent, they're not now, so we couldn't tell you where they are. All they have to have is a mailing address. Well, you know, they could be operating out of your basement with the mailing address. And so, some things, the new law, we're going to find out where the manufacturers are, they got to register with the state and then we can enforce it as well. So, we are back, we did backtrack on the banning, but that's why we did it. We've got it, where if we pass this one, it's going to be highly regulated and the good guys will do it the right way and they'll still make money off it and people can still have the smaller doses. But, the bad actors, hopefully, we get out of the community.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anything I can do, let me know and Mr. Mumford will definitely hook you up with the folks in Atlanta.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our number two item on the agenda today is receiving presentation regarding the Coast Guard Beach Park from Rob Brown with Goodman Mills Kaywood.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jason Hagan, program director. Rob Brown is here from GMC and he is going to go over presentation for Coast Guard Beach, myself, Lisa Gudanis, director for Recreation Parks, as well as Dave Carver, facilities manager. We're here to answer questions if they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, and good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Rob Brown, I'm an engineer with Goodman Mills and Kaywood, and I'm excited to present to you today about the Coast Guard Beach Park. And it's one of Glen County's and St. Simon's Island's largest and most popular beach access points. It's a photo widely used. So, Scott McQuaid from Convention and Visitors Bureau was here last month and presented about the 2018 conceptual master plan, the background behind that plan, and the results from that assessment. There was a discussion toward the end of the presentation about the bathroom facilities and today's presentation is going to dig in a little bit deeper with those bathroom facilities and as they relate to this project. So, from the master plan process, they did an assessment of the bathroom facilities and found that there is not enough capacity. There's long lines on busy summer days and there's a lot of reports of them being quite dirty, because there's no ability to fully close off the bathrooms and clean them like you have with airport bathrooms, where you can close off the section and give a good thorough cleaning midday. So, have a lot of issues with cleanliness and then the survey respondents also responded during the master planning process that ventilation is a pretty big issue with these bathroom facilities in the summertime. Some of the current temporary fixes of the counties, who are independent, say, weekend had fifteen porta-potties out there at Coast Guard Beach Park to help some capacity issues. But, overall, from the master plan process, that committee had recommended a new structure over renovations to the existing one. Here's some photos of the location of the existing facility and the proposed new one from the master plan. So, our picture on the bottom left, our aerial image, you see the existing bathroom facility in the red circle. That's also overlaid on the conceptual master plan with the building footprint in the red polygon also outlined by the red circle. And you see that that is located pretty much close to the center of the property and incorporated into areas where it's currently proposed as parking from the master plan. The master plan proposed to put in a new bathroom facility at number nineteen in the yellow circle and then putting that back onto aerial image on the bottom left, basically going to be located roughly in the area where the sailboat storage yard is located. When the current facility was built and constructed, that sailboat storage yard was already in place, so the bathroom facility was located where it is now. Under our current project, the sailboat storage yard is no longer going to be located there. So, there's an opportunity as we're going through this project to consider relocating the bathroom facility in a more convenient location that provides a number of benefits that I'm going to review in these next couple of slides. And then, just historically, looking at a photo on the bottom right, this location used to be in the ocean, but the beach is accreted here and the beaches have grown. So, now we have a lot more space to work with, so we're looking to best utilize the space at this existing site. So, while we're talking about space and the importance of that at this property, we're going to jump back and talk about parking issues. So, there's a number of public safety concerns with how people currently park around this facility and when the parking lot is full. So, people parked us on the side of the streets illegally, people have their wheels in the roadway on that bottom picture, then they're walking up and down the street with their beach equipment, proposing a safety concern for them and for other vehicles. So, because space being a main concern, we're looking to try and optimize and maximize the number of parking stalls at this facility. Under the current layout, there's two hundred and forty-two parking stalls and then with the 2018 master plan, the, with the new and relocated bathroom facility, the main lot is going to have three hundred and one parking stalls, so an increase of four fifty-nine stalls. However, we're renovating the bathroom facility and adding in addition, we're going to lose forty stalls from what's shown in the master plan. So, we only have a net gain of nineteen stalls instead of fifty-nine. So, a loss of forty parking stalls if we go with an option of renovating and adding in addition. So, I talked about stalls in terms of, in terms of parking, we're also going to talk about stalls in terms of bathrooms in just a minute. But, first, I wanted to highlight the results of the interior assessment of the bathroom facility. These are some observations from the facilities maintenance group at Public Works. They basically get calls quite regularly of issues, they go out there and fix them, but a couple of maintenance concerns are quite large and this includes that there's a floor drain collapsed in the women's bathroom underneath the slab, so to repair that, it's going to be about twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars. They frequently have waistline backup issues due to not enough fall or the pipes have settled. So, it's recommended, a potential So it's recommended a potential $40,000 project to install a grinder pump and lift station. And then this area, it's not air-conditioned, so these bathrooms are open to the outside salt air, bones blown dust and dirt. So can have a lot shorter lifetime for fixtures and equipment inside the bathroom facility. The overall assessment of the current facility is that it's going to be a major remodel upgrade in the very near future. So just keeping them as is and putting in addition on the structure is not a recommended approach. If there is going to need to be an addition, this site is also going to need a pretty major remodel. So I talked initially about stalls in terms of parking, now talking about stalls in terms of bathrooms and toilets. So under the current conditions, there's four sinks for each men and women's. The women's room has seven toilets, 180 compliant, the men's has five with 180 compliant and two urinals. From the conceptual master plan, they had created that design based on fixture count of 1,200 people. And from that, the women's room more than doubled from seven to 16 toilets, doubled the number of sinks. And they were the one that had the largest, or largest capacity issues, so they are needing more capacity and more stalls. The men's room did not have, because of the long lines observed, the men's room did not quite have that same issue, but we're still, from the master plan, adding stalls to their location as well. So they're going to see a 40. Urinals up to 10. So the options here are really two, there's either build and a new facility and then relocate it, or to renovate the existing structure and area to be able to handle those needs identified from the master plan, where it's having enough capacity as well as the cleaning needs from that assessment. So this option for the new facility, we need a 2,100 square foot facility, about $1.11 million. This is a 25% increase in overall surface area compared to the existing structure that's about. The women's room, and then this initial option that I'm presenting to you is incorporating some of the men's expansion from the existing storage and concession area. So, but an overall addition of 700 feet is required for this one, resulting in a total estimated cost of $1.055 million. So the difference between these two options is about $55,000, which is less than 1% of the overall project budget. So I mentioned about incorporating some of the existing space in the renovation with this one. From the master planning process, their recommendation for a new facility did not have anything with a concession stand, that 2,100 square feet was bathrooms only. So looking at option number two of those, if you're building a new facility that's relocated with a concession stand, the current one's about 270 square feet, would require our new facility to be instead of 2,100 square feet, 2,400 square feet, so about $1.255 million. And then now with our renovating existing structure, while keeping that concession stand in place with our 700 square feet from women plus 200 square feet for the men's addition, we're adding 1,000 square feet to the overall building structure, so that is an estimated cost of $1.225 million. So $30,000 difference between these two for this option. And then between this slide and the previous slide, these are some decisions that can made, be made in the future. But the important thing is to look to see if we're looking to relocate and build a new facility or deciding to renovate the existing. So between the two options, they were quite similar cost between those two options, but in looking at with or without concessions stands, those are different. So that, that will require input and feedback from, from you all when we get to that stage. But right now, the, the question is about the new relocated facility versus a renovation of the existing. I just wanted to highlight some other observations from the existing facility to highlight a couple other issues that are seen at that site. And one of which, this photo on the left, there's a trench drain retrofit in front of the bathroom areas, because there's some drainage issues at this area. That it's filled with sediment, so it creates an ongoing maintenance headache and challenge with that. The AC units are installed on grade, we're in an AE flood zone or the 100-year flood zone. So technically, if they were to go with, be up to flood code, they would have to be, these would have to be elevated at one feet or one foot. And then a couple other observations from the site, there's a window man AC unit on the one on the left, I mentioned that ventilation is an issue, so they're temporary fixing with that type of item, so, but not quite solving the issue, so it is a much larger fix. And then the existing picnic benches are under open pergola, so they don't provide cover from sun and rain. Our existing roof is, will be getting close to 20 years old, so it will be in time almost, or sorry, in time it will be need of replacement. So that will be a large extra cost to that existing facility too. So I just wanted to highlight the overall benefits, looking at a relocated new facility versus taking your existing facility, pretty much doing a major gutting and renovation and then adding on a pretty substantial addition to that site. So with our, the biggest benefit for the relocated new facility is about with this site layout. By relocating it, since we have this whole property to work with and putting it in this area a little bit further to the east where the boat storage yard is, you're going to have fewer constraints. You'll be able to make a much more efficient design, maximize parking, be more efficient with the travel lanes and transportation around the site. I mentioned parking with the renovated new facility that's, sorry, with the relocated new facility, you're going to be adding 40 more parking stalls than renovating your existing structure. That's going to lead to less illegal parking. Since January of 2022, there's been 72 calls to the police about parking issues in this East Beach area. Also with our new facility that's relocated, it's going to be a brand-new facility, not just a renovated interior with the bones of an old facility. You'll be able to satisfy your flood ordinance requirements from a construction sequencing perspective. By relocating the facility where the bathroom stored, sorry, where the sailboat storage yard is, you can construct that facility and it'll be up and operational. And then you can seamlessly switch to make that the bathrooms to use while people are still using the beach access points. And then you can demolish your existing structure and then work on renovating the rest of the site with the parking lot area. And lastly, you have an ability to combine the bathroom facility with other structures closer to the beach. There's a number of other structures shown in the conceptual master plan that there could be some cost savings by incorporating them all within, within one structure. But until we were able to fully get into the, those design details and discussions, we would need to be looking that we're relocating the facility at that location. So there's been a lot of work that's been put into the master plan process, and we've done a lot of assessment of that process and of the results from that study. Been looking at the master plan very thoroughly, and we're agreeing with their recommendation that a new relocated facility would provide the best use of space and benefits to this site and to the community. So I just wanted to leave you with some final closing thoughts that this is an opportunity for the county to really provide a cohesive, well-thought-out gateway for all Glen County residents and visitors that use this beach for now and for years to come, for future generations. It's just, it's a very large project that will have an opportunity to just be highly visible across the community. And all, many community residents use this as their, their main beach access point, so I want to make the, the best beach access point for them and best park for them, best utilize our, our resources. So I appreciate your time listening to this presentation and wanted to see if you had any, any questions.
Mr. Brown, somewhere in the presentation, there was 1,200 count, what, what, what is that, 1,200? What does that represent?
That was the, the fixture count that was used to calculate how many bathroom stalls are needed.
I mean, is that?
So.
People, per what time period or?
Just of people in use at that time period. So if our parking system or parking lot is going to be about 300 stall, 300 parking stalls, if there's three people in each of those cars, someone might be a little more, someone might be a little less here. Here, less than 1,200, but that, that'll be a number that, it was conservative at that, at that time for when the master plan was developed.
Okay, thank you. We had asked, you know, a month or two months ago to go back and analyze the cost analysis of this. This is, seems pretty thorough and it presents us with a pro and con for each scenario. I appreciate the time that you've put into this to, to bring us information that we can make a more informed decision on.
Thank you.
This is, this is compelling to me.
Yeah, you know, our, our job as Commissioners is to be good stewards and guardians of the taxpayer dollars. And, you know, and I was looking at this picture of, of the bathrooms that are there, there, and just the visual of it looks like it's such a nice facility as it sits. And I was, I don't know the cost effect between tearing it down and building two new structures to give you 20 something more parking places. I don't know, that's got to be analyzed, but I know that, I know that I don't want this just to be a beautification project. I, I want it to be functional and well-used. And my thoughts on it were that if we could take the existing bathhouse and make it, say, just male, you know, it's divided up into two separate sections. You could close one down while you clean the other and then open it back up and do the same thing back and forth, and then it's, becomes functional. And then maybe build a nicer female ladies bathroom. I know that that doesn't fit into the master plan that, that CBV and the Historical Society is wanting to do. But I, I, we had to fight hard because y'all were the low bidders and we fought hard to, you know, because we were mindful of the taxpayer dollars. And that's, that's the, it's not a rub with me, I want to, I just want to know which one is the most cost-effective. Is it, is it, would it be more cost-effective to tear this one down and build another one? Because this is less than 20 years old, it's a bathhouse, it's not like, it's, it's not like a living structure. But, or just add, just add another bathroom along with this one and just enlarge it. And so that's the stuff that, you know, we're going back and forth, but we want to be mindful of, of the taxpayers.
There's a lot of benefits that are, that the new relocated facility provide that's beyond just construction cost. And those are a couple of items that I had presented, but with the overall facility right now, it's, it's going to need a major remodel. And by constructing a new facility, we're able to create it at a more efficient structure with a new facility than renovating our existing one. We'll need to have a little bit larger overall structure, so from this one, it was with a new facility, brand-new facility, we can do in 2,100 square feet what we would need 2,400 square feet from the existing structure with an addition. And this addition is presenting just adding a new addition of just women's stalls to get to that, that capacity. Where we're taking some of the existing space from the current facility for the addition of the men's stalls or the expansion of the men's stalls.
What stood out to me is, is we're within $55,000 of, of a dead cost. 1% or less than, 1% of the cost. It, it just, at, at this one, I, I was, you know, hoping that we could be a 10% or 20% savings. So it doesn't appear to be that way. I know these are preliminary numbers, but, and then with some of the issues that, that we're having, that I wasn't aware of with the existing, just, it, it just tends to, to even this out and lean, lean toward.
And then the, the bones of your renovated structure will be closer, closer to 20 years old when that, that's completed. So that's going to have a, a lifetime to it that's then shorter than the new facility.
So you're in that business, what's the life, what's the lifespan of a bathroom at the beach?
It depends on what the materials that are used.
You think you, you came in this one?
For this one with the wooden studs, they're more in the 25 to 30 years, metal could be more in 45 to 50 years. So we would look with the, the new facility, the new, or any of the addition, new facility construction to make items most efficient for our future maintenance with, with the option that we are going to look for. But overall, the, the difference in, in these two is, is, is this very small percentage.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, in June of this year, the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission is offering a $20 million grant, of which Glen County would qualify for $600,000, $600,000 of that to build new bathrooms. So Monica is working on that now, of course, she would need to know, the, the only way we could get it would be to apply it towards new bathrooms. We wouldn't be able to get it to renovate the bathrooms. So it's a match, we do have money available, but it would be $600,000 that we didn't have.
Jason, just to add to that, there's a couple of different grants that we're looking at, so there's one also for the parking area, depending on what we put in the parking area. So we could, we could get some additional grant money, not only for the, the lifeguard tower that we're talking about, but potentially for, we could apply at least for the grant for the bathrooms, but then also for the parking area. So there's some substantial money out there that we will at least apply for and hopefully be able to receive.
But one of the things that I caught, Mr. Brown, was also the, the constructing new allows us down the road in the design to consolidate and combine structures, which could have significant benefit down the line.
Exactly, thanks for pointing that out, I was going to re-highlight that one, but there could be options for cost savings that we're definitely going to explore once we get into the, the full design to look for any ways that we can best utilize that, that money toward this project.
Really can't go into design until you know whether we're going to keep or replace.
Exactly, this is a, a big decision, a big decision that needs to be made that's going to direct us in terms of how we configure the site and how we design the structures.
I'm just interested in what's best for the taxpayers of Plankham.
Our recommendation is that, also agreeing with the master plan showing that a new relocated facility is the, the best option for this site overall, for the community, and then for making the most efficient, best, best product for you. Commissioners, we knew this was going to be a difficult decision for our, so that's why we wanted Rob to put together this presentation to kind of talk about the cost benefit analysis. But then also just illustrate some of the other things that were included here. So we wanted to make sure that you had all the information that you needed just to be able to make a decision. But as Commissioner Rapolski mentioned, we can't even get to the requirement stage until we make a decision here so that we can pass GMC.
Okay, so why would they, not give us grant if we were remodeling, why only building?
According to the grant, it's to a new structure, sir. So Southeast Crescent Regional Commission. It, it goes towards the new structure of a building, sir, and I have some information that I could share with you.
The other thing that jumps out is about square feet too. We, a remodeled facility would give us 300 square foot more of bathroom facility versus a new one, correct? 24 versus 2,100?
That's for the same usage of number of stalls, it's just that they're, they're renovated addition, renovation with addition needs to be larger overall because there's inefficiencies with how it's designed. To Commissioner Clark's question, the current, the current structure, that's 300 square feet of, of the store space.
Okay, that's what the difference would be. And this new one would be closer to the ocean, correct?
Yes.
Where it'd be more wear and tear versus where it's at? I'm just, I've lived on the coast all my life and the coast beats up everything, I mean, it does. So we put it closer to the ocean, what's the lifespan of it before, because this one's only, what, 17, 15 years old?
Yeah, it's close to 17 years old. And, but the, the difference between those two locations, it's, I feel like it's 100 feet or less, so it's.
It's a little bit, probably a little bit more than that, but because where the, the yachts are, the sailboats are and everything, I just, the wear and tear the coast puts on a building. And to Commissioner Rapolski, until we get into the nuts and bolts of more materials, you know, this is, it's a good cost comparison, but there's a lot of questions still embedded for me going forward, but just, so the storage is 300 foot difference.
The concession stand is 270 square, so it's about the difference.
About the difference, okay, thank you.
And one of the, one of the things that we heard yesterday was that further it gets away, the more crowded it is, the less people use it and they're using. further it gets away, the more crowded it is, the less people use it and they're using the dunes and, uh, some of the other areas rather than come up to the restroom. Closer it is, more people use it, if we will.
Mr. Chairman, the Commissioners, um, thank you that we have, I think, done an appropriate job of setting, uh, what kind of investment taxpayers would expect for us to, to make in this new addition. You each got a pad, right? And this is about numbers. And I, I'd like for you to each, I'm gonna ask you some questions as a group and just write some thoughts down. Um, so let's talk about just the population of St. Simons. That's about eighteen thousand people. How many people do you think St. Simons are going down to that coastline? Remember, your, your, your numbers are three hundred and thirty-one spaces at best. Then let's take Glen County, five districts, eighteen thousand a district. That's ninety thousand people. Now, how many people are gonna come to the beach at St. Simons from your district? Commissioner Swett from your district, Booker's district.
Where my district sits, most of the people that, in my district, go to Jekyll Island.
Well, you know what's happening at Jekyll back in the, over there. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not, I'm just telling you the gross numbers, what, what percentage do you think are gonna come to St. Simons first? Um, let's just talk about short-term rentals on St. Simons. We've got approximately nineteen hundred short-term rentals on St. Simons. I deal with them every day. I'd say the safe average, and Don Myers is here, he, he, probably six to persons to each of those short-term rentals would be a safe number. I know from caring on my boats, cause I ask them. The average is eight to twelve people that go in these houses with families, grandparents. Now, that's why I have the boats that I did, because that number can fit in. But if you take that, uh, nineteen hundred times six, that's six thousand five hundred, uh, individuals. Then let's just talk about day traffic, uh, construction workers that are over there. Right now, you know, coming onto the island, all of us do in the mornings, the construction traffic getting on now. How many you think of those? And we don't know what those numbers are. Causeway traffic, I think, is twenty-four thousand. Uh, sixteen thousand when you get the split of the roads. How many of those construction workers at lunch, especially on a day? For the most time, we wanna go down and park and have lunch, cool off a little bit. That's just that part. Now, we got the pier. But where else do you go? I understand that we're talking about an investment, whatever we make to stand for the next twenty years. You know, we, we looking at this size being capable to handle the next twenty years. Is there any doubt that the growth of St. Simons and tourism is gonna continue to grow? Much less Glen County, much less, uh, people moving in. And where are you gonna go? Jekyll or St. Simons? I just think to stick with a, an existing facility in this discussion would be naive. What we should do is make the decision to move forward and continue the really studious look is, okay, what have you got there? You've got a beach access, you've got bathrooms, concession stand, okay, but bathrooms. And you've got parking. So where, where does our focus for the future really need to be at that access? And I think that's something that we can help move forward by saying, let's don't be too limited in our investment for the next twenty years. We want a smart investment. I just want you to see the numbers that will continue to grow and go to that park, go to Jekyll. And that we need to build bathrooms there because of a lot of complaints. Even this summer, coming from people peeing and pooping in the bitches, beach, in the dunes. Anyway, so I hope that we'll move forward from the whole bathrooms, take the space that we have and make the best design that we as a commission should envision to accommodate bathroom usage. And the fact that this is also coming from CBB tax money, it's not just exclusively county.
It is tax money, it's bad tax money.
All right. Any other discussion, any comments? And we need this decision.
He said. You said if we remove the old facility, we pick up forty-one or forty-four parking spaces? By moving it back, everything, uh, it, where the tower's gonna be, if we incorporate all those buildings in one area, the bathrooms and the tower, it, it would be a cleaner look than having the bathrooms up front and then back to the tower and where the focal area is supposed to be. It saves how many parking places?
So you save forty parking spaces by moving it from what the design would be? So I just popped up the numbers real quick.
And at that point, we have a new facility that would be good for twenty years versus we have a facility that's already seventeen years old. And if we go use it and add twenty to it, it'll be thirty-seven years old and you know it would be outdated by then. I, I'm not one for tearing stuff down, but, but if you look at the cost difference towards the end, I don't really think it was enough to, to fight over. And when you're building the new facility, you've still got those old bathrooms there to use until the new thing's done and then they can come down in the parking lot. In other words, work can be done in the back first and then comments.
You could almost start the construction in the summertime when it's busier because the construction would be located outside of the, the usage area. And then as soon as the summer period is over, it's less busy, reopen those up and then shift to the, the construction to the parking lot. And then just keep everything flowing and open the whole time and not cause a disruption to residents, visitors, anybody.
My only concern is we build it big enough that it will be good for twenty years. That, that's my concern.
And that'll be an, an element that we, we'll look much closer into
Into that.
when we're in the design stage, but in that decision of, are we moving it?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I'll just put this out to my fellow commissioners. I think the real discussion the last couple of times is about, are we gonna focus on rehabbing the existing bathrooms and the existing bathrooms? Moving the numbers, it's adding space don't really add it up. Uh, then we're talking about, you know, adding on women's and I, in the beginning, I totally agree. I think what our joint party, CBB and the county commission, a contractor that's been hired to move this project forward, just needs one simple thing to move us to a better discussion, and that is to just say, we're not gonna rehab the existing bathrooms and let them come back with the plan that they're tasked with of looking at the whole park, looking at the precise layout of where the best location is and how many to put in and bring that back to us. That's the goal that we're really at, too.
Mr. Sirgill, I'm more than bringing this to the commission meeting Thursday night, but.
Yes.
It's out of consensus. All right. I think we can do that if you'll add that, Rob. All right. Uh, Rob, thank you. And, uh, is, do you have any closing comments or anything else that you'd like to add to this?
No, I think it all been covered pretty well. Thank you very much for your time and, and listening and your, and your feedback as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
And Jason, if, uh, you would remain and introduce our third, uh, secret presentation regarding the St. Simons Boating and Fishing Club financials. I know Mr. Clemence is here.
Uh, yes, sir. So Mr. Cullen is here to do a presentation and provide an update on the, uh, St. Simons Boating and Fishing Club.
You have to introduce yourself because we don't recognize you anymore.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Clemens Cullens. I'm the Vice President of the St. Simons Boating and Fishing Club. We do business at St. Simons Marina, joined with our, uh, President Joe Applegate, who is in the back where we always tend to sit. Commissioners, I forwarded y'all a, uh, a brief update and summary of our last twelve months' operations, uh, yesterday. I'm happy to hop right in and start talking or, uh, if it's more convenient for y'all, just pepper me with questions.
Why don't you give us a summary and then, uh, I think we'll be good.
Absolutely. Well, uh, the previous twelve months, uh, the marine operations have gone on largely, uh, without any major interruptions. Uh, we've done a number of structural repairs to the marina over the past twelve months. I believe last year when I presented, we had an estimate that we were about to spend, uh, close to fifty thousand dollars on structural repairs. Uh, surprise, surprise, that ended up being closer to sixty thousand. No change orders, just the cost of goods going up there. Uh, other than that, we, we had revenue that was similar to the previous years. If the Commission will remember, I think two years ago, you approved, uh, slight increase to our rates, uh, that we brought for you. Those have gone a long way into, uh, helping us achieve, you know, more financial stability and also, uh, to contribute to our, our mandatory damage reserve fund, which is contemplated in the lease, and then our supplemental, uh, reserve fund, which will be used to, uh, make structural repairs to the concrete piling and concrete cap, uh, on the northern and southern portion of the, the main dock there. So, uh, all in all, the, the marina is financially stable. Uh, we've continued to see increased revenue, um, year over year. But with, uh, the economy slowing down a little bit, and, uh, I'm sure most of you are familiar, during COVID, there was a tremendous boost in boating and marine activities. It was pretty much the only thing people could do. So we, uh, we were the benefactors of that for a couple of years and we anticipate this year to, to have a slight cooling off. Um, absolutely nothing dire, but, uh, we, we would anticipate being somewhere back around the twenty-twenty numbers by the end of the year. Membership is about the same. We slowly accumulate members throughout the year. It usually caps out around four hundred. Uh, I think we're around three fifty right now. So basically on par, maybe five or ten members short of where we were last year, uh, but still, again, above the, the pre-COVID averages. Uh, Commissioner Fendig, I, I know you're always eager to hear about our waitlist. I'm happy to announce that for the first time, I think in my life, there's not a waitlist to get into the marina, uh, depending on the size of the boat.
I think everybody gave up.
I'm not gonna respond to that, but, but I do appreciate the sentiment. No, we, we got down, um, a, a lot of it, Commissioner Fendig, is that, uh, a majority of our boat slips inside of the dry storage can only handle boats up to twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet, including the motor. Uh, and there's just not as many people that, that have boats that small anymore. On the larger boat slips that we can accommodate up to twenty-eight feet, thirty feet with motor, uh, there's less than a two-year waitlist on, on those and we only have about fifteen slips there. The south dock permanent storage, there's, it's generally full, but those are the wet slips. It's generally full, but there's not currently a waitlist. And typically in the fall, that, that kinda, there's some turnover. So we'll expect to get anybody that's looking to come in, uh, put in there sometime in the next few months. The other main talking point that the Commission usually wants to address is, uh, is our differentiation between members and non-members. Uh, again, and Commissioner Swett and Clark, I, I apologize. This is the first time I've had the pleasure of presenting to you guys and good to see you guys back there. The St. Simons Marina has, it's open for public use and we do have memberships. It's a hundred dollars a year to become a member. If you are a member, you receive fifty percent off of your short-term overnight docking, so ten dollars a night instead of twenty dollars a night. Uh, and then to get, we have to have some mechanism to maintain a list of people who want to keep their boats in dry storage. So, uh, that mechanism is you have to be a member to put your name on the list to get in there. So those are literally the only two benefits of being a member. And we do have an annual, uh, get-together, an annual meeting once a year in October that, uh, all the membership and in fact, all the public is invited to. So, uh, those are the only benefits of being a member. You don't get priority over anything. You don't get a discount on gas or, uh, anything like that. Oh, you also get a discount on the taking your boat in and out. It works out that if you take your boat in and out about ten times a year, it's, it makes financial sense to become a member. Uh, this past year, just like other years, we, we keep an approximate record of the, the revenue streams. About fifty-five percent of the revenue, overall revenue comes from members, uh, and forty-five percent comes from non-members. If you go down to that marina on any Saturday during the summer, you'll see license plates from all over the state and all over the country. Uh, it's, it's a place that a ton of people feel welcome to come to and, and we try to keep it that way. We've, I know that there was some, uh, discussion in previous years about the public nature of the marina and advertising that. We've taken steps, uh, as long as I've been on board to make the public nature more well-known. We advertise on the county's website now. Uh, we have redone all of our signage indicating that it is a public marina. Um, and we are absolutely happy to, to have anybody from anywhere come and use it. And, uh, we gladly take their money, just like, just like the members. Uh, the only note that I wanted to make before, I'm sure you guys have some great questions, is that, uh, we have been contributing, this is our fourth year of a, essentially a five-year lease. That's one-year annual, annual renewable terms, and then we've got some extensions on there. We've been contributing to, uh, multiple funds. Uh, one of those is a stru, uh, damage fund in, in the event that there's a hurricane. Um, and then the other one is, like I said, to do the structural repairs to the pylons and/or the, the top coat of concrete that's, uh, at the marina. If you all have been there, it's, uh, directly, the, the top coat I'm talking about is directly under the, the hoist. We've made those contributions, but in addition, uh, and those structural repairs will be, will need to complete those, in the next year or so, uh, according to the EMC report that we are obligated to adhere to. In addition to those structural repair funds and the damage fund that we have, uh, I did want to point out that, uh, in the past, since, since the inception of the initial lease agreement in two thousand and nineteen, the marina has gone above and beyond. We've contributed over a hundred thousand dollars to structural repairs to the docks. These structural repairs are in a, in excessive routine maintenance. Uh, it's things like collars popping off, uh, the collars that go around the columns popping off, portions of the dock becoming dislodged and needing to be replaced. Uh, and I point that out because, uh, one, we're, we're proud of how much we do to keep up the marina. And two, to, to point out that we are extremely financially vested in, in the upkeep of the marina. we are extremely financially vested in, in the upkeep of the marina and are making these very unforeseen repairs. Happy to do it. We, every person that, that comes to that marina, every person on this board, our marina manager, everybody loves that place and will, will do whatever we need to, to, to keep it in great shape. And hopefully the, the county will keep leasing it to us for, I think we're at like 85 years, so maybe another 85 years. And that's, that's it.
Thank you for being good stewards of that county property.
Well, thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I, I appreciate y'all have done a great job since we had it come together. Place is much cleaner, bathrooms are cleaner, you know, you're keeping track of the parking up there on the hill with the trailers organized, the docks clean. I get calls from guests and locals saying that the upgrades are noticeable and the care. So we really appreciate y'all stepping up to do that. But I got one.
Yes, sir.
We talk about growth. I talk about, we're talking about the parts, told my bathrooms, talk about the growth that's going to continue to come over the next 20 years. And you know, I challenged your group that, that particular parcel has particular restrictions to it. And it's not like it can grow down the block growing. I taught y'all about, you know, on St. Simons and the commissioner. And the chairman probably, and you know, when you move in most neighborhoods now, they don't allow folks on trucks in the driveway. You gotta either be able to put them in the garage and on the island and the distance continuing to grow. And I challenged two things, just making it said, is that people need opportunities to do recreational things, kayaking, boating. And those places are limited that we have. The investments and capacity that we have. We talked about, y'all may be looking at the future sometime, expanding upward space and redesigning that operation, you know, where you could store more boards and launch more boats. Because St. Simons is still growing. I might even talk about all my history. So you've done a great job, but I, I, I would think it would be vision for y'all as a group and a group that loves and cares for that. Nothing hasn't expanded a square foot except on the floating docks since I grew up here as a kid, eight years old going up there. Need to look at the future, the next 20 years. I just hope, you know. I'm certain one term, but I hope that future groups will understand that vision means looking at it 20 years and seeing what, what can benefit the people. So I'm certain of this.
And I, I, we are more than happy to explore any possibilities with the county and we'd be happy to do, do anything.
Well, you know, I did say it to you.
Yes, sir.
Anything, anything else?
Commissioners, thank you. Good to see you all.
Thank you. I like you, Tom.
Mr. Attorney, anything for executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that.
Chairman motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Stand adjourned. Thank you.